Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, October 7th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. And we're having a regular business meeting tonight. Our first item is a public hearing for the Hillcrest Drive R1 zoning designation for annexation area. And we'll turn to Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. We have to do this every time that we have an annexation process. The Planning Commission has recommended that the area in line to be annexed should be zoned as an R1 zoning. So this will go through council after the public hearing this evening to be gone through three readings. We might have already done one or two? So, yes. Are there any people who would like to talk about this in particular?
Okay. And this is a small parcel of land that came, the city became aware of because the residents told us it's a very small parcel at the end of Hillcrest Drive. And what we realized is that it needed to be annexed in order for the city to be able to provide services for that area. And it's contiguous to this homeowner's property and on a, at the end of a city street.
Okay. Then I would close. Any other questions? Thank you.
Will this cost the city any money?
It's within the small amount of road maintenance, probably, but I think probably some of the road maintenance has been done via courtesy anyway.
No, thank you.
To your point, we will now have to maintain that. But it is a very small parcel and we will have it repaved and then we would do the snow removal, which we already get up there and help when we can. I did speak with the property owner last week and the property owner is excited to see this moving forward.
Yeah. Annexation is a multi-step process for, so it can have lots of public input and safeguards. So, thank you. There's a sheet going around. Please sign your name. Thank you. That's the closing of this public hearing.
All right. Our next item of business is establishing a quorum and all members of council are present tonight. And I believe Councilmember Fall, you have another item?
Yes, I would like to amend the agenda for this evening to include a resolution that will be read three, three readings. Our resolution O919, a resolution accepting the petitions and articles of incorporation of the Athens Uptown Special Improvement District, CID, and declaring it necessary to improve certain areas of Uptown Athens and declaring an emergency. So we will read this later for the first time. It's another multi-process, multi-step process, which is the establishing of the Special Improvement District Uptown, which is a really exciting prospect and has a lot of power. So, thank you.
Is that a motion?
A motion, a so motion.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The agenda's been amended. We now have disposition of minutes for the regular session of city council held on September 16th, 2019.
So moved?
For approval, okay.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed, nay. The minutes have been approved. Under communications, just to let the public know that we have received input from Integrated Services for Behavioral Health about Carpenter Hall. And they are, this is the piece of property that they manage that is on Lancaster, Lancaster Street. It may actually be a Carpenter Street at that point, probably is. They've chosen to submit their final application documents for Carpenter Hall since the project's been invited to receive tax credits to rehabilitate the property. They are securing financing, completing the surveys, working with architects to include green and sustainable materials on 80% plans, then ordering appraisals and going through an environmental review. And they expect the property will be able to start renovations in spring of 2020. So they're just communicating with us where they are in the process and welcoming any input regarding the issues. Are there any other communications from council members? Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. Not sure if the mics are live or we can hear us okay, Scott? It's all good. One thing I wanted to share, a concern of the administration is, and also on a good note, the parking garage, I've noticed some of the enhancements and changes, which I applaud. I think it's easier to ascertain what level you're on now with the new paint and the color coating. I appreciate that improvement. And I also encourage a little more acknowledgement or dedication towards our electric charging stations that, that exist in the parking garage. I think we're forward-thinking and putting those in there, and I think that's great. However, I have noticed people parking in those spots that are not electric cars. Drives me a little bonkers when I see a non-electric car parked in those spots. So I'm encouraging us to do a more proactive with addressing that. So, thank you.
Mayor Patterson, you have some information to add to that?
I do. With, with the current renovations that are going on with, in the parking garage, the plan is to paint the parking space decking identifiably green. And also have a stencil logo that represents that it is a charging station space. The cord for one of those, the one that, if you're looking at them, the one to the right, the cord itself will reach far enough to have a car parked in a third space over. So we're contemplating painting that space green as well, but we haven't made any determination on that unto itself. But these will be clearly marked because this will also be something that we see at the community center, in particular at the pool, because they have a charging station down there and we're going to be painting the same color green with the same stencil on the ground, identifying that as an EV charging station space.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other communications? Yes, Councilmember McGee.
Thank you. Just a question concerning the mayor's statement. Is there any penalty for somebody who parks in those spots and doesn't use them?
I'll get, I'll get you some information on that, Councilmember McGee. I don't know. We really modeled ourselves after Ohio University's charging stations that they have at Peeden Stadium and elsewhere around campus. But I don't know that we've had conversation about that in particular and what that penalty would look like if you're parked in the EV charging station spaces when you don't have and you've got a fossil fuel vehicle. Yeah, I'll find out.
Thank you.
Any other communications? Different topic? Yes?
Thank you, President Nisley. Yes, upon my return from being out of town, I did, and this may have already been addressed in one of the other council meetings, but I did have in my mailbox some concerns from Mr. Jack Stouffer about the potential issues and changes going on with resolution R-08-19 and looking into the R1 neighborhoods and potential housing changes. So I just wanted to acknowledge that I did have that in my mailbox and I did reach out to him. I've spoken with him twice about this particular issue and I know he'd welcome hearing from others as well. Thank you.
Okay. Any other communications? Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. I wanted to announce the next regular board meeting of the Athens City School District. That is going to be on October 17th, 6:30 PM at the Athens High School Auditorium.
Okay. All right. Reports and communications from other elected officials. What do I realize? Auditor head? Mayor Patterson.
I have several tonight, President Nisley. First, since we were talking about parking garage, I do want to at least update the elevator and the fact that the operator is, the elevator is still inoperable. The problem that we're experiencing is that the elevator was, you know, the original elevator and then the rehab of the elevator, it's a cone elevator, but it's some time ago, we changed over in terms of maintenance to Otis to operate, to maintain it. Therein lies the problem, is that the parts are cone problem, are parts not from the other company. And so we're getting, there's difficulties that we're experiencing and we're applying all the pressure we can to make sure that that elevator is finally functional. The other thing that happened, and this is, I know this well in my former life, being a crypto telecommunications person and knowing what happens when something takes a lightning strike, where you think you have the fix to one problem, you start putting in new CPUs or whatever, only to find out that there's other secondary and tertiary problems that come up because not everything will run smoothly when you take a lightning strike. And so they're finding that there were other components within the cars that need to be replaced as well. So, like I said, we're putting as much pressure as possible on the companies or the company to get this rectified as soon as possible. And I certainly apologize for any inconvenience to those who have special needs or people who just don't want to have to walk five sets of stairs. I was talking to our parking enforcement officer and she too looked at me and she said, "Mayor, can we hurry up and get this fixed because I have to go up all these flights of steps to go and enforce parking in the parking garage?" So, more to come on that. We received a letter from the Ohio Department of Transportation and that is that we will be receiving the Transportation Alternatives Program grant as well as the safety program grant of up to $500,000 for that one and up to $505,000 under the Transportation Alternatives Program for improvements on State Street between College and Congress, as well as East Union from Court to College Street. We'd actually asked under this granting mechanism to have Washington between College and Congress included. We're reaching back out to ODOT to see if we can change the West Union or the East Union, sorry, street segment to West Washington instead for improvements. This, this grant will be to make similar improvements that you've all seen on West Union Street between Court and Congress. So we're, we're excited that we've, we've got, you know, we were awarded a million dollars. This will be a 2023 project. So again, kind of a long game, but all the same, we were successful in getting this. We had been encouraged after being rejected last cycle, we were strongly encouraged to reapply. And as usual, you, you all know this, council, Jessica Dine did a great job again, one of our city engineers, to make sure that we were able to land that. There will be a ribbon cutting for the water treatment plant improvements. It will be October 16th. It will be at 3:00 PM down at the water treatment plant. A lot of improvements down there to include our new solar array, which I believe is 190 kilowatts for that particular solar array. And with that comes something else I want to share with council. We received a letter last week from AEP Ohio recognizing, they called it the City of Athens Water Works, we all affectionately refer to it as the Water Treatment Plant, for, let me read this, "For their commitment to energy efficiencies and the environment in taking part in AEP Ohio's savings incentive programs for businesses in 2018. As a result of their leadership, they will save 56,376 kilowatt hours or 42.49 tons of CO2 annually, which is the equivalent of taking nine cars off the road per year, annual CO2 generation of five single-family homes, or 703 tree seedlings, seedlings growing for 10 years." So this is big. And I'm really hopeful that with the carbon fee program, which will start in 2020, that we will continue to have more solar projects on municipal buildings in the city of Athens to see more and more savings. I should point out to you, it's great seeing those numbers or hearing those numbers. It's also great to hear about the energy efficiencies and the savings that the city is seeing in terms of our electric bill, which has dropped down significantly, which allows us to be better stewards of taxpayer dollars and deploy that money towards other needs in the city. So I wanted to share that with council. The last thing I have, and I gave council a copy of our report card, our 2019 evaluation report from American Bloom. And to give you a kind of a recap from last year, last year, they changed their rating system to where it was a 1 to 10 pedal rating system. Last year, we received six pedals. This year, we increased our score by two pedals. Our average points and percentage, total possible points that someone can accrue in a number of different areas, community vitality, flowers, landscape areas, urban forestry, environmental efforts, celebrating heritage, and then overall impression. And then there's another one, evaluation tour, preparation and actions. But anyway, for all the points that you could possibly receive is 610, the city of Athens received 448, which was 73.44% on their scoring. So we increased, like I said, our scoring through the three evaluators that were here. And again, as you know, our, our goal is to hit 10 out of 10 pedals in the future. But I have to give a lot of credit to the master gardeners. I have to give a lot of credit to all the volunteers that took part in getting us ready for this. And for our city workers, you know, when it came to repurposing our former round trash bins into planters that are on Court Street, and then some of our civic leaders here in the city of Athens for working shoulder to shoulder with the city administration and city employees to get the lamppost flower baskets up this year. I have to give a large credit to the Cornwell family that they took a big part in getting those up, as well as others in the city. So it all helped with our getting a strong rating as well as enhancing quality of life in the city of Athens. And that's all I have, President Nisley.
We'll move on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 8819 is an ordinance to adopt the City of Athens Affordable Housing Plan to support accessibility, sustainability, and economic development. And this is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 8819.
Second.
Thank you. As you all know, this ordinance is to adopt the plan that came from years of work from the Affordable Housing Tax Force, or Task Force, and then the Affordable Housing Commission. And I would like to just thank everyone who served on those and did the work and research and ask that we adopt this to move forward with some really positive options for the city for affordable housing.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 8819. Any comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Fall.
I want to commend councilperson Grace, also Michelle Pappy, who was essential in, in pushing this forward. At one, at some point, we're going to have to get as a probably Planning and Development Committee to sit down and look at the priorities that we can attack as a city council and see what other steps we can take with other partners within the city and administration. So kind of a prioritization thing. So I think that's the next step. And I'm, I'm, this is great. It's good to have a, you know, kind of roadmap on where to go from here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. I too would like to express my gratitude and support for this ordinance. A lot of work went into this. Councilmember Pappy, who served on this dais and held councilmember Crowell's seat, put a lot of work into this and, and worked extensively with the university. This is another example of the university and the city partnering well and collaboratively to move forward. I think again, perspective, when you say affordable housing, it can mean different things to different people. And this is clearly defined within the legislation, what that's referencing and the need for housing that accommodates young professionals, people that are recently looking to call this home, and potentially also faculty member, visiting faculty. There's a need again for, for housing that isn't, isn't really represented in this, in this definition. So I do again want to express my support. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council members? Yes, Councilmember McGee.
Thank you. I would like to express my support to all the people who have worked on this plan in general, but I, I think it's important to realize as we're saying to the public that this is just a plan, that we haven't actually taken the steps that we need to make this plan enforce. And I just wondered if somebody could at least state for the public what the essence of the plan is as far as, so we would understand what we're actually adopting.
Certainly. So this is the, it is for the city to adopt the recommendations of the Affordable Housing Commission. And those recommendations are spelled out in, in the document that is attached to the ordinance, but briefly, that the Affordable Housing Commission recommends that the city should establish a housing and redevelopment department with dedicated staff, perhaps within a housing authority or other existing entity. Two, that the Affordable Housing Commission should be maintained and serve as an advisory body for the above-mentioned housing and redevelopment department. And three, that the city should support some public-private partnerships for establishing housing developments that meet specified criteria for price, percentage of units with universal design, and sustainability utilizing the following measures. And then some of the measures that might be incorporated into these public-private partnerships are some zoning modifications, incentives that could include TIPS, the taxing incremental financing, low-income housing tax credits, expedited review or permitting processes, permit fee reductions, waivers or fee bates, some city grants, revolving loan fund, property tax exemption slash reduction, and tax increment financing slash downtown revitalization district. So those are just some of the, the options that might be incorporated into a public-private partnership that would then incentivize the development or redevelopment of housing for affordable housing needs. And our, the commission is asking that the city adopt this as recommendations to guide future legislation.
And there's one other, yeah, there's one other one that I see, a city should support neighborhood revitalization efforts. And that's a very important one too.
Thank you. I didn't keep scrolling down. Yeah, and that, that is an important, in addition to new development, we want to strongly encourage redevelopment of existing properties within the city.
I would thank you for the explanation and I, I think that's very important because we've had some allegations by some people during this election season that the only thing that city council is doing is trying to increase support for more expensive housing. And I think this demonstrates that's not the case at all. So thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Member McGee.
And any other comments or questions from council or administration, or any comments from the audience or questions? Yes. You need to go up. Yes. Thanks for being here, Judy. If you could give us your name and address.
Judy Roman. I live on Northwood Drive, 12 Northwood Drive. When you're talking about affordable housing, what money, what are we talking about as far as money? I mean, like, is there a range?
There are different ranges that are established in, in the details of the report. And I believe some of those are in the more moderate income. And we do have some low to moderate income housing that the city also promotes through the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Well, I had heard, and I don't know if this is right, I heard 125,000 to 250,000 for houses that are going to be built.
That is an amount mentioned in that.
That is correct. This is, what, what's important to understand is that the, the focus of this group was, we, we were tasked with affordable housing, which is a defined category nationally. And in some works, it's labeled workforce housing, but we wanted to avoid that particular term because workforce housing then seems to perhaps exclude retirees or other portions of the population. So affordable housing is, is separate from low-income housing.
I understand that.
Yeah. And so the, the specific price point that research found was, was needed in the city was between 125 and 250. 125 to 250,000.
Okay. And we do have some, there's a little bit of additional information on the focus. It also says inclusive, as you mentioned, Councilmember Grace, from starter homes to retirement, mobility challenges to low income, and then housing for people who otherwise can't afford housing. So, thank you. Thanks for the question. Okay. So we've had a motion and second, comments and questions, and we'll now have the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 8918 is an ordinance closing a portion of Court, Washington, and State Streets on Monday, October 28th, 2019, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM for trick-or-treat hosted by the Athens Uptown Business Association and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 08919.
Second.
And this is, it is for a street closure, starting at Court Street at, at the intersection of Union Street. Union would still stay open, but then coming three blocks north and ending right before Carpenter Street. And so this happens on Monday, October 28th, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM. And this is for an event where the Uptown Business Association allows children to trick-or-treat from business to business. So thank you to Ayuba for making this possible.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of this motion, ordinance. Any comments or questions? Okay. Any comments or questions from the audience? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 9019 is an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter on October 26th and 27th, 2019, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens on Halloween weekend and declaring an emergency. Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 09019.
Second.
And, you know, I think I say this every year, love it or hate it, this is part of our, our DNA. So this is the street closure for Halloween weekend, which is going to be on October 26th and 27th of 2019.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. Briefly, I just want to offer my support and primarily so because of the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee. This is a proven effort in which the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee works closely with the administration to make this an event that is, again, safe and doable, knowing that it's quite extensive and a lot of people entering, coming to our town. So thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from council members, administration, audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. And the next two ordinances are the, the corollaries to it banning the, or yes, suspending the noise ordinance and then also allowing for vending and peddling. So 9119 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Sections 13.0, 4.10, unnecessary noise. For- noise for scheduled bandstand performances hosted by the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee on October 26 and 27, 2019, Halloween weekend, and declaring an emergency. Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, I'd like to make a motion to adopt 09119.
Second.
And this does suspend our noise ordinance, so that is something that will allow the party to happen the way that it happens.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 9119. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember McGee.
Yes, I've heard indirectly that the plan is to reduce the hours for the bandstand significantly this year, and I just wondered if that's the case, and this ordinance itself doesn't list any time, so I would assume that the ordinance allows for the suspension of the noise ordinance until at least midnight or 12:01. But again, I'm not sure who's in charge of actually doing the bandstand, but as I say, if it's going to be closed at 9 o'clock or 10 o'clock, I mean, that's what's being circulated. If that's wrong, I would be glad to know it.
That's unfortunate. It's not going to be 9 or 10. I believe that Brandon Thompson is scheduling us to go on either 11:30 or 12, but I can get you that time and report it to council, maybe at our next regular session in our communication, but no, it's not going to be 9 o'clock at night.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question. Right, any other comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. 9219 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting, to allow vending in a designated area on October 26 and 27, 2019, Halloween weekend, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 09219.
Second.
And this just allows vendors to vend on our city streets and areas that aren't usually allowed for that purpose during the Halloween weekend, October 26 and 27, 2019.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Just a question.
Yes, Councilmember McGee.
Are the vending spots assigned in any particular way? So, I mean, I'm always concerned that our local vendors might feel slighted if they're kept in the distance at their regular spots as opposed to having the opportunity to be further down on Court Street. I don't know how they are assigned, so.
I don't either, but I can find out that for you, too, as well as Councilmember McGee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 9319 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Section 7.05.26(c), regulation of city parking garage rates on October 25, 26, and 27, Halloween weekend, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 09319.
Second.
And this is to, just like the title says, suspend our enforcement of the parking garage rates on October 25, 26, and 27, in order to encourage people to park in our parking garage.
Okay. We have a motion and second. Do we have any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 9419 is an ordinance amending 9917, the revised agreement with the Board of Athens County Commissioners to extend sanitary sewer collection services to unincorporated portions of the county, and this is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I'm motion that we adopt 9419.
Second.
This reduces the amount of time that certain parties have to align with the construction and loan for this particular project. This is out in the county. It used to be a longer timeline because all projects were having, they were in the future, and now that the process is going along, we're reducing that closure time. Thank you.
We have a motion and second for approval of 9419. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. 9519 is an ordinance designating the zone for the annexation area on Hillcrest Drive, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 9519.
Second.
Thank you. We had the public hearing just today about this particular annexation. Annexation is a multi-step process, as I've said before. This is one of the last steps of going through the annexation process because now it will be part of the city. It has to have a designation for its zoning, and the zoning for this particular one has been designated as an R1 zoning area by the Planning Commission. This is the designation by the City Council. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 9519. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. The ordinance is for second reading. I'll read the title and then see if there are any other comments or questions, but we'll just be probably reading the title on most of these tonight unless we know of any suspensions. These are ordinances for second reading. 9619, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to re-designate Hawking, Athens Perry County, Perry Community Action Programs, known as HAPCAP, to administer Athens public transit. This is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. So if no comments or questions, we'll read the next one. 9719, this is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to re-designate Hawking, Athens Perry Community Action Programs. HAPCAP is the contract administrator for the Ohio Rural Intercity Bus Program, known as GO Bus, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, 9819 is an ordinance suspending Athens City Code Section 7.05.03, continuous parking in the same location from Sunday, December 15, 2019, through midnight on Wednesday, January 1, 2019, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. If no comments or questions, we'll move on. 9919 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to suspend temporarily the fee for parking at metered spaces in the municipal parking garage, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Any comments or questions? Okay. 119 is an ordinance adopting the Athens County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan for the City of Athens and is introduced by Councilmember Butler. If no comments or questions, we'll move on to the next one. 10119, this is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.07 Administrative Departments, Boards, and Commissions, Sections 7.3, 3.07.70 and 3.07.71, Athens City Commission on Disabilities, introduced by Councilmember Fall. And we'll now, if no comments or questions on that one, move on to ordinances for first reading. 10419 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary for the design of the Columbia Avenue Sanitary Sewer, introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. Quite simply, this addresses our aging infrastructure. There's some concerns and challenges with our aging infrastructure and terrain. East 108 Columbia Avenue, there's a portion of the sanitary sewer line that's failing and is further threatened by land slippage. So this would authorize the City Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids when necessary to deal with this challenge. Thank you.
Okay. Ordinance 10519, if no comments or questions on that one. Ordinance 10519 is an ordinance amending the 2019 appropriation ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Allow me to read the appropriation ordinance. Section 1, the 2019 appropriation ordinance 140-18 is hereby amended by appropriating the following from the unappropriated balance. $36,000 to General Fund 101.718, Parking Enforcement, Transaction Code 300, for IPS service fees. $362,588 to General Fund Other Administration 101.120, Transaction Code 300, for a refund check received from the Bureau of Workers' Compensation, BWC, and increase in the total appropriations by set amounts.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Okay. I will offer one comment, but I think the Bureau of Workers' Refund is an interesting one because statewide, the state had $1.5 billion in rebates that they reissued back to city and municipalities, to states' public and private employers in May, and they say it was because of declining claims, investment returns, and cost savings that enabled the refund. So it's interesting, and thank you. It'll be well-used, I'm sure. Auditor hacked, right? Okay. Ordinance 10619 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into or to extend the agreement with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office through December 31, 2020, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Allow me to read the ordinance. Section 1, the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into or to extend the agreement with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office through December 31, 2020. Section 2, the mayor is hereby authorized to expend up to $100,000 from the 2020 General Fund 101-106, Transaction Code 300, for said contract.
Okay. Comments or questions? All right. We'll move on to ordinance 10719, an ordinance amending ordinance 14218, staffing levels and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Allow me to read the ordinance. Section 1, ordinance 142-18, Staffing Levels, is hereby amended to change the position of landscaper to head landscaper, a copy of which is attached heretofu and incorporated herein by reference. And it is attached to the ordinance. It's also on our drive, so council members are free to look at it.
Okay. And am I remembering that this was the ordinance for which we were asking some additional information or not?
Not that I recall.
Not on this one? Okay.
Auditor?
I think we've worked that all out.
Okay.
Ms. Nelson was engaged and did a review of the suggested changes. We had someone in the city retire, and instead of replacing that position as-is, some of the duties have been added to other positions, so we have two positions that are taking on additional duties. So they've moved up in our pay grades and, of course, also should be getting a pay increase. But, yeah, I think we've worked with everyone that we should to get this right.
Good. Thank you. Thanks for answering that question. Okay. So that was 107. 10819 is an ordinance amending ordinance 7116, authorizing non-union pay grades and declaring an emergency, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. This is, ordinance goes in tandem with the previous. Section 1, ordinance 71-16, Non-Union Pay Grades, is hereby amended to add the position of head landscaper to pay grade 3 and change the pay grade for the position of APR Labor Supervisor from pay grade 7 to pay grade 8, as attached heretofu and incorporated herein by reference. And attached to the ordinance are the pay grades from pay grade 1 all the way up to 12, so we're talking from 6 to 7.
Okay.
So the auditor, will you want to add anything to that?
The only addition that I would have, and I don't know that we have a separate ordinance for this, but each of those positions are getting a 10% increase, which has to be approved by council.
And I believe that's the next one.
Yeah.
The next ordinance.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So that would be just, yeah.
You're ahead of us.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Yeah. But we changed the pay rates, and also part of, one of them is changing how they're paid. So if, you know, one, we've changed the percentage, we're taking 10% for one of the positions out of the cemetery budget, besides, instead of having it all coming out of Arts, Parks, and Recreation, because the cemetery positions are not under that budget. So, sorry to get ahead of you.
No, that's fine. I'd rather have you ask the question. Ordinance 10919 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to pay the head landscaper and Arts, Parks, and Recreation Labor Supervisor a rate in accordance with ordinance 14318, the Non-Union Personnel Fringe Benefits Package, Section 20, Promotion, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Finance and Personnel.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the third ordinance in this little package here. The auditor has already gave a preemptive strike on what we're talking about, which is good. Section 1, in accordance with the Non-Union Personnel Fringe Benefits Package, ordinance 143-18, Section 20, Paragraph A, Section 1, Promotion, Lateral Transfer, and Demotion of New Hires and Current Employees. Athens City Council does hereby authorize the Service Safety Director to pay the head landscaper and the APR Labor Supervisor at a rate up to 10% higher than the rate from which the employee was promoted. And that's exactly what the auditor was discussing a few months ago.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. And now we have the reading of, the first reading of a three reading resolution, R919.
Thank you. This resolution is, there's a bit of background. Uptown, the businesses have been, have been going through a process of looking at a special improvement district that would be a self-imposed tax on all the businesses uptown to do things such as cleaning, snow removal, making sure that parking lots are clean, those sort of improvement projects that are, they're self-financing them. This process is put forward through the Ohio Revised Code, and there's, once again, many steps to this process, too. This resolution will be a three-rating resolution, is just the first process. This resolution accepting the petitions and articles of incorporation of Athens Uptown Special Improvement District, ASID, and declaring it necessary to improve certain areas of Uptown Athens and declaring an emergency. They have been, one of the hurdles that you have to pass on being able to do a Uptown, the ASID, the Special Improvement District, is to get more than 60% of the business owners to sign on to the articles of incorporation, and that's what this process is doing. Mayor?
It would be property owners.
Property owners.
The owners of all the parcels within said area, which we have defined as being from Carpenter to roughly President Street, and then hemmed in, if you want to think it that way, by College to the east and Congress to the west, but not including those particular streets.
So this is, this is something that the mayor and property owners uptown have been working on for quite a while. So, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Patterson.
Special Improvement Districts, you know, have to be renewed by the property owners every five years. They come back up for renewal, which, again, has a petition process, which, five years from now, if council is still sitting in your seats where you're at, you will be in the position to go through this process again. The other thing with a special improvement district, which lines up nicely with my communication from earlier tonight, which is the Ohio Department of Transportation Grants, that is an option for the special improvement district to augment something like that, to where if they, too, wanted to say, "We want to have park benches like we see on West Union between Court and Congress and more of them," then they can choose to use the funding that they have, that they will be receiving. that they will be receiving for something like that, or flowers, or as you mentioned, snow removal. It can be gum removal. It can be a number of different things. But it's the board and the General Assembly that makes the decision as to what kinds of improvements are seen using ASID monies.
Okay. And we have two comments. Councilmember Kotzis first, oh, and then Grace, and then back to Butler.
President Isley, thank you. And this is good because, so I wanted to ask, as you were, as you were talking about the TAP grants, you know, most grants usually tend to have a match. Is it something that the ASID could actually provide a match to a, to a grant? Is that, is that an option? Or are we then starting to cross the public-private threshold a little bit too much?
I think that's crossing over.
Okay.
And that, again, to do something like that would certainly require action by the ASID's board and the General Assembly to do that. But I'm glad you asked that because it's one of the things I failed to mention. The, for the Transportation Alternative Program, it's, will provide 95% of the eligible costs. So there will be 5% on the city's end, which is pretty minimal for a grant of that type. And I believe it is also 95% of eligible costs for the safety program funding.
Okay. Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I just wanted to commend the mayor. I know getting to the 60% has required persistence, and I think that this could be a really wonderful thing for the uptown business area. And, and I think it's great that, that they, their board decides how they want to invest this money, how, what improvements they want to see for the businesses. And I would think that perhaps if someone on the board wanted to take on the task of writing grants, then they could choose to apply for their, their own grants and match their funds in that manner, if not with, with TAP grants. But anyway, thank, thank you. I think this is, this is a really positive thing.
Okay. Thanks. Councilmember Butler, and then Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, President Isley. I, too, want to echo Councilmember Grace's acknowledgements and thank Mayor Patterson. This is, I think, the fortune we have as a community to have a mayor who is networking with his peers and seeing what's, what's working in other communities. And to me, this is a perfect opportunity for us to look at beautification and civic pride. I have not received any opposition or emails regarding this in a negative light. So again, I appreciate the mayor's homework and boots on the street to make this happen. So thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Reisner.
In addition to the beautification and maintenance aspects of what ASID money can be, could it also be adapted to things like microcell communications, wireless?
Uptown free Wi-Fi?
Exactly.
It could. It could be used for that. It could be used...
It's improvement money.
Well, that'd be improvement.
It's not just beautification. It's improvement.
Do something.
And, and one of the things here is that it's the board and the, you know, the General Assembly driven. So if they decide to do that, then that would be acceptable.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Councilmember.
We now have announcements and other business. Next week, we'll be having committee meeting. We will also, preceding that, be having a special session of council for the purpose of reading some of the ordinances that need to move through.
Before May 31st?
Before, yeah. December, December 31st, yes. And if, committee chairs will let the clerk of council know if your committee is going to meet.
Well, it's personnel.
Okay.
Transportation.
Okay. Maybe, maybe planning. Okay, we'll find out. Any other announcements? Yeah, yes.
I have an announcement. I should have brought this up in communication, but I just want to inform council that I've been invited to sit on a panel up in Columbus, actually in Dublin, at the Ohio Economic Development Association Summit. And I will be speaking on opportunity zones. Just as a reminder to council, the city of Athens has two opportunity zones in the city proper, one that we refer to as the East State Street Opportunity Zone, and the other one is the Stimson Avenue Corridor Opportunity Zone. And so I'm going to be speaking. The moderator is the, the director for Ohio Development Services Agency, Lydia Mahalik. And so it'll, it'll be good to represent the city of Athens up there on that stage and talk about some of the things we are exploring under our opportunity zone, in particular the Stimson Avenue Opportunity Zone, where I'm sure council is aware that there is someone who's interested in helping us develop that corridor in the city of Athens. So I'll be speaking on that.
Our next item of business is, just to announce that there will be an executive session, and we will have a motion to go into that executive session.
So moved.
And for the purpose of, and you need to read the three...
For matters pending litigation and firefighters' collective bargaining contract.
In fact, there are three matters of pending litigation.
Actually, four matters.
Four matters.
Two matters of pending litigation and two matters regarding collective bargaining.
Okay. Thank you.
What she said. I move that all council, all council members, the mayor, the auditor, law director, and the president, so attending.
Okay. So we have a motion and...
Second.
Second, okay. And roll call vote. Councilmember Butler?
Aye.
Councilmember Reisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Crowell?
Aye.
Councilmember Fall?
Aye.
Councilmember Kotzis?
Aye.
Councilmember McGee?
Well, I believe it would be more appropriate to all the citizens to make our comments before we go into the executive session.
We, we will be. We're just making the motion right now. I didn't drop it off the agenda. It's just the order it appeared in.
Okay.
And Councilmember Grace?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. So it's 7:58 right now, and what we'll do is we'll be making, we'll now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items, the city services, that were not covered on the agenda. What we will do after that is allow the time for Professor Sutis's students and other members of the press or other interested citizens to talk with council members or administration. Then we will go into the executive session. After that executive session, after we come out of that, we open the doors so that if somebody does need to wait and talk further with people, they can do that. And then we adjourn. So, right now, going back to the opportunity for citizens to speak. Is there anyone? Yes, Mr. Monday, if you want to come on up. Give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Chris Monday, Nine Garfield Avenue. So about the affordable housing thing, I feel like some of the explanations were directed towards me a little bit and some other people who are running. And so, and I, and I hear what you're saying with a lot of it. So I just want to offer an explanation of the perspective of some people, which is probably not lost on you, I would imagine. When people work like 40 to 60 hours a week and are running from landlords, some people are lucky enough to have landlords they like. Some get burned by landlords repeatedly. They'd love to get out of the situation, love to buy a house. Housing is going up and up. So when there's something called affordable housing that is like still so out of reach of like the, many of the regular people of Athens, it really hurts. And when it's to bring in young professionals from out of town to a university where attendance is declining, it hurts even more because it's just like, we want, we want these people from out here more than we want you. And I'm not saying that that's what you're thinking and that's your goal, but that, this is what people are feeling. And I hear that there's a lot more going on with it, and a lot, and a lot of the aspects of it, I think, are great. I love the revitalization of neighborhoods. I think that that's awesome. My worry there is that the houses that are reclaimed from students will be too expensive. But I just wanted to throw this out there. I appreciate the explanations because there is a lot that I don't know about it, and I definitely admit that. But this is, this is the way that people are feeling. To us, it seems like housing, not affordable housing. And I don't know. I, I hope that all of the heat on some of this stuff will kind of steer things a little bit in a, in a different direction. Because, yeah, housing, landlords, we feel burned. So that's all. I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you very much.
Thanks. So it's now 8:01 PM, and so we'll give till 8:15 for students and anybody else, citizens that want to ask questions, and then we will close the doors for executive session.